Ms. George, here. Ms. Laau, here. Mr. Michael, here. Mr. Shawnessy, here. Ms. Shear, here. Mr. Spicer, here. The second floor of the people's.
...to the law of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, obligation under God indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
And please go green. I'm sorry, I have to notify you. You're way ahead of me, thank you. Okay, I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining of the failure law. Get your sitting seat appointment of particular individual or individuals in employment history of particular individuals or individuals or corporations. All those in favor?
I'd like to amend that, please. I'd like to seek advice from legal counsel.
Okay, I answer, seek advice from legal counsel. Okay. Legal counsel, thank you.
We have to move again.
Yeah. Okay. All those in favor, we limit.
Aye.
So, all those in favor of adjourning, Ed Monroe.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? There we go. All right, we will return to public session as close to seven p.m. as possible. Thank you. Are you ready to part later? All right, so we're reading in a very important person. So, we'll begin with public participation. If there's anyone who would like to address the board, this would be one of your opportunities. I've done one at the end of the meeting. The policy, getting public participation is a fixed podium. You have a two-minute limit. Our board clerk, there's no time, we're approaching the two minutes, and we do not discuss the discipline records of students or personnel. We do discuss issues, however. So, if you would like to address the board at this time, please approach the podium. Okay. No papers. Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to approval of minutes. You'll let me know. Approval of minutes, on your chain of motion, two hundred and fifty minutes of March twenty-seventh.
Seven.
Okay. Any amendments or corrections to finish?
I was told that there was one of the reasons for executive session was to seek advice from people counsel.
Mm-hmm.
I haven't seen it on the page.
It wasn't on the print agenda. It was, however, on the video.
Okay, I should have that being in the minutes.
Okay, I can remember it. Okay. All right, so we will amend it to say, one of the reasons for judicial redos to seek court of counsel, we'll amend the print agenda, if that we have in mind. Okay. All those in favor of amended minutes?
Aye.
Anyone opposed abstentions? One, two minutes of April third. I'll accept the motion to two hundred and fifty minutes of April third.
Second.
Okay. Any amendments? It's just the budget discussion. Any amendments or corrections? All right? All those in favor, two hundred and fifty third, so you can probably say no.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We'll grant the superintendent's.
Okay. With that, I would like to turn the floor over to Dr. Pedoyle with the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Shear. So, I will start the superintendent's report while we're waiting on a special guest, and I'll interrupt, I guess I'll interrupt myself when the guest arrives. Just wanted a couple things to point out that aren't on your agenda. I did want to mention that the school district is being honored by the Mental Health Association of Ulster County at an event that will be held on May twenty-first from four to six at the Mental Health Association. So, I'm going to get more information and invitations out to everyone as soon as Ellen Pedagakis needs a little more information. I thought it was worth mentioning, and I did send this to each of you in an email the other day when it came in, and I think it's worth also mentioning that they specifically thanked Mr. Verge, Mr. Silverstein for their work in this area, and our health teachers in middle schools, both Bailey, Miller, and Kingston High School. So, I just wanted to just bring that to your attention and to everyone else. It's a great honor, I think.
I would like firstly congratulate the administration and also the faculty members who make this possible for us to win this award. It's a delicious talk.
Yes, Mr. Shawnessy.
Well, I'm very proud of it. I think that Kingston City School District is really one of the state leaders and maybe even the national leader or something in recognizing the need for social, emotional learning and attention to mental health needs of students. And it's been going on here for five years or more, and I think this is, I'm glad that the district is being recognized for that.
So, if it pleases the president, I'd like to go back to district captain, to student recognition, I'm sort of.
Absolutely. Okay.
So, traditionally, one of my favorite nights of the year, and tonight is the night that we will introduce our 2019 KHS valedictorian as a salutatorian. So, our 2019 KHS valedictorian has a GPA of one hundred point three eight four. And I would have said one hundred point four, but those point, those decimal points matter, I guess, when we make these calculations. This student, by taking advantage of the AP and college classes offered at Kingston High School, and by being brilliant, has earned a full M, has a full semester on her belt when she enters college this fall. She took AP Calculus, AP Chemistry, AP Physics, Advanced College Spanish, just a name few. That didn't keep her busy enough. She was also a drum major for the Kingston High School marching band, which is also the largest marching band in New York State for those people who don't know that. She'll be attending Boston University next year and is majoring in biomedical engineering, and she aspires to one day be a pediatric surgeon. It's my honor to introduce our 2019 Kingston High School valedictorian, Keira Milburn. The 2019 Kingston High School's salutatorian has a GPA of one hundred twenty-two five five. This student also took advantage of her AP and college classes at the high school, even in his senior year challenging AP Computer Science, AP Vittler, AP U.S. History, and college-level physics and astronomy. His extracurricular involvement is actually as impressive as his coursework. He's the president of the Academic World Class Club, president of World Quest Club, president of Highlights, vice president of the Science Olympias, and he's a member of the Robis Club. He will attend the Cooper Union or University of Buffalo in the fall and major in civil engineering. It's also my honor to introduce, although he is not here with us tonight, he still should be recognized, Coleman H. King-Horring as a 2019 Kingston High School valedictorian. I've had the pleasure of meeting all these students several times last week, and it is just very proud of our students of this caliber in our school district, coming out of our school district and representing Kingston. And I want to congratulate the parents of both our valedictorian and salutatorian, raising just fantastic children and sharing them with us. Thank you. Yes. One other thing I did want to touch base with the board about, we have two, obviously we have two principal positions open that we're looking for, principal for Kingston High School. That has been posted internally and externally, and that posting will close on May seventeen, and then we'll begin our process, which will be led by Ms. Bondell, to replace our current principal at Kingston High School. So, we are gathering our information, bringing, getting our resumes in at this time, and we'll paper screen them, we'll do a first-round screening of in-person people who we believe are candidates that maybe will move forward, and then we will do our regular interviews as has been our process. So, we're excited and anxious to move forward and find someone to lead Kingston High School. Our George Washington search, we had our first local kind of in-person screening with several candidates. I think out of that group, about two of them were chosen to be moving forward, but seeing that we didn't get the result we wanted out of some of our other postings, we have reposted, and we're looking to repost in six publications. We had some issues with three of those publications last time around the posting, we're hoping to solve that, and we also received a new publication, a new resource to look for someone from this hand late last week, so we will be looking at six postings there. We're going to post for approximately fourteen days in those publications, hoping to get a greater turnout on our out-of-district applicants. So, our applicant at that point, we will do the same process, we will paper screen, we'll do some in-person screens, and decide who's going to move forward in the process, along with the two local candidates that we think will move forward. So, we'll be, you know, a couple weeks before we jump right back into this, but that's where we are, and we, again, wanted to repost nationally or more, you know, not just globally, so we could hopefully get a great, large pool of candidates.
So, we've posted in the Montessori kind of journal publications, and it's in the national network, not just local?
We have six different publications that we, actually, we received them from, I was asking around, and some of them came from this hand to find out where we, where should we post.
But didn't we do that the first time?
We did, we did. We didn't receive, we didn't get, we had five.
We posted in five places.
No, we had five. Three of the five didn't work responsive to us. We've reached back out, we wanted to get them into all five, all six of those publications, so we may be are reaching the Montessori people who are out there.
So, what you're saying is the first time we had five journals or five places and we're looking to post?
Right. Only ended up in two.
Because the other three didn't respond?
Correct.
We've now reached out again to those others, plus a few more? And are they any responsive this time around?
I have to miss, I have to meet Ms. Reinhardt tomorrow about it. That's exactly where we are in that part.
Okay, and then how long is this going to be open for?
Fourteen days.
What day does it get posted?
From the day it gets posted, yes.
And then, you know, the inter process that many parents from the school at some point, like down the road?
Yeah, but we hope to get to the end of the road, and then we'll either bring finalists or finalists over to meet a team from the PPI, as I call it, the PPI. So, an easy transition from there, we're going to go into our principals' report, which is from the hand from George Washington.
Sorry, I have to leave the stand. Thank you. Just a little point of clarification before we start. I apologize ahead of time, it's a little long, so I hope you don't fall asleep. And as part of the directive recommendations from the Montessori last year, we were asked to do more educating of the community about Montessori. So, this is a little bit about that, and I talked to the person first, I think, she got this morning, and sent her the link and asked her if she would post it on GW website, the district GW website. So, hopefully that will help. Part of the presentation, or most of it, is done by the children. I put out the first slides of what a Montessori school is, and my staff was kind enough to send me pictures, and the children did the speaking. They learned how to use technology on my iPad along with me, so we did it together. And then I walked away and let them do the taping, the deleting, the editing, and attaching it to the document. So, they did it, and it's their work. So, I'll start, if that's okay? I hope it works. Uh-oh.
Is there sound?
No sound? No sound. It's true. It shouldn't be there. It's sound. No. It worked when I sent. Can you, did you get sound on words when I sent it?
I PBF'd it and put it in. I didn't do.
It looked so hard out. Huh. Oh, well, I guess I could read it.
Were you looking at the PBF or were you looking at another?
I was wondering, I think I sent it on the one.
Yeah, because that's the one, I think.
Or was that?
No, it is, the one you sent. That's the version you sent.
Is it possible that the clicker won't advance it, that there's a play button on the video in the, you use the mouse?
The version, well, when I sent it, it had a little speaker on each one, so I know the voice was there, I don't know. Okay.
Can you hear it? All righty, wait a minute.
You can't hear it, yeah?
No, not on the one I put on the internet, because I.
Great, is that the one you sent, Craig?
No, I sent.
The original.
Right.
Yeah, and it was a little speaker on it. When I opened yours up, there was a speaker on there, so I know that it was there, right?
I wasn't able to hear the speaker.
You weren't?
No, I didn't go, so it wasn't, I couldn't see it, might be.
All right, well, I guess you're going to have to listen to my voice instead then. And I left my iPad home, so, okay. Well, I'll go next. Do you want me to read them, or do you want to do it yourself? I don't mind reading, but my voice is sort of like, well, yeah? Do you? Do you want, do you want to read the one?
Whatever you want to, you choose.
It doesn't matter. I can read the first one anyway. "Our principal concern must be to educate humanity, the human beings of all nations in order to guide it towards seeking common goals. We must turn back and make the child our principal concern. The efforts of science must be concentrated on the child because he is the source of and the key to the riddles of humanity. The child is richly endowed with power, sensitivities, and constructive instincts that has yet have neither been recognized nor put to use. In order to develop, he needs much broader opportunities than he has been offered thus far. Might not the school be reached by changing the entire structure of education?" And it's the twenty best practices of a Montessori school, authentic Montessori school. The first is a child-centered environment. The focus of the activity in a Montessori setting is on the children learning, not on teaching, teachers' teaching. Generally, students work individually or in small self-selected groups. There will be very few whole group lessons. A prepared, a responsive, prepared environment. The environment should be designed to meet the needs, interests, abilities, and development of the children in the class. The educator should design and adapt the environment with this community of children in mind, rapidly modifying the selection of educational materials available, the physical layout and the tone of the class to best fit the ever-changing needs of the children. A focus on individual progress and development. Within the environment, children progress at their own pace, moving to the next steps in each area of learning as they are ready to do so. While the child lives within a larger community of children, each student is viewed as a universe at one. This is our fourth grade. Hands-on learning. In a Montessori environment, learning, excuse me, in a Montessori learning environment, students rarely learn from textbooks or workbooks. In all cases, direct, personal hands-on contact with either real things under study or with concrete learning materials that bring abstract concepts to life allow children to learn with a much deeper understanding. Spontaneous activity. It is natural for children to talk, move, touch things, and explore the world around them. Any true Montessori environment encourages children to move about freely with reasonable limits of appropriate behavior. Much of the time, the children select work that has been presented to them individually and which captures their interest and attention, although the Montessori educator also strives to draw their attention and capture their interest in new challenges and areas of inquiry. And even within this atmosphere of spontaneous activity, students do eventually have to master the basic skills of their culture, even if initially they would prefer to avoid them. Active learning. In Montessori learning environments, children not only select their own work from the choices presented to them, but also continue to work with tasks, returning to continue their work over many weeks or months until finally, the work is so easy for them that they can demonstrate it to younger children. This is one of the many ways that Montessori educators use to confirm that students have reached mastery of each skill. Self-motivated activity. One of Montessori's key concepts is the idea that children are driven by their desire to become independent and competent beings in the world, to learn new things and master new skills. For this reason, outside rewards to create external motivation are both unnecessary and potentially can lead to passive adults who are dependent on others for everything, from their self-image to permission to follow their dreams. In the process of making independent choices and exploring concepts largely on their own, Montessori children conduct their own sense of individual identity and personal judgment of right and wrong. Freedom within limits. Montessori children enjoy considerable freedom of movement and choice. However, their freedom always exists within carefully defined limits on the range of their behavior. They are free to do anything appropriate to the ground rules of the community, but are redirected promptly and friendly if they cross over the line. Self-disciplined learning. In Montessori programs, children do not work for grades or external rewards, nor do they simply complete assignments given to them by their Montessori educators. Children learn because they are interested in things and because all children share a desire to become competent and independent human beings. Montessori learning communities. Mixed-age groups. Montessori learning environments gather together children of two, three, or more age levels into a family group. Children remain together for several years, with fully developed students moving on to the next age grouping when they demonstrate readiness to do so. A family setting. Montessori learning environments are communities of children and adults. As children grow older and more capable, they assume a greater role in helping to care for the environment and meet the needs of the younger children in the class. The focus is less on the educators and more on the entire community of children and adults, much like one finds in a real family. Cooperation and collaboration rather than competition. Montessori children are encouraged to treat one another with kindness and respect. Insults and shunning behaviors tend to be more rare. Instead, we normally find children who have a great fondness for one another and who are free from needless interpersonal competition for attention and prestige. Because children learn at their own pace, Montessori educators remain free from comparing students against one another. Children as spiritual beings. Montessori saw children as far more than simply scholars. In her view, each child is a full and complete human being, the mother or father of the adult man or woman he or she will become. Eventually, when very young children, even when very young, the child shares with the rest of humanity personal hopes, dreams, and fears, emotions, and longing. From Montessori's perspective, this goal goes beyond mental health to the very core of one's inner spiritual life. Montessori educators consciously design social communities and educational experiences that cultivate the child's sentiment of dependence, self-respect, love of peace, and passion for self-chosen work well done. Universal values. Montessori educators deliberately develop in children not only appropriate patterns of polite behavior, but seek to instill basic universal values within the core of the child's personality. These values include self-respect, acceptance of the uniqueness and dignity of each person we meet, kindness, peacefulness, compassion, empathy, honor, individual responsibility, and courage to speak from our hearts. Global understanding. All Montessori schools are to a large degree international schools. They not only tend to attract a diverse student body, representing many ethnic backgrounds, religions, and international backgrounds, but they actively celebrate their diversity. The curriculum is international in its heritage and focus, and constantly seeks to promote Service to others. Montessori spiritual perspective leads Montessori schools to consciously organize programs of community service, ranging from daily contributions to others within the class or a school setting, to community outreach programs that allow children and adults to make a difference in the lives of others. The fundamental idea is one of stewardship. The Montessori educator is firm at the edges and empathetic at the center. The Montessori educator is never punitive, but is the kind of adult who responds empathetically to children's feelings while setting clear and consistent limits. Observer. The Montessori educator is an observer of children's learning and behaviors. These careful observations are recorded and used to inform where each student is in terms of his or her development, and leads the Montessori educator to know when to intervene in the children's learning, with allowing more practice time, making a presentation of a new lesson, a fresh challenge, or a reinforcement of basic ground rules. An educational resource. Montessori educators facilitate the learning process by serving as a resource or caring mentor to whom the children can turn as they put together information, impressions, and experiences. That's a volunteer, by the way. Model. Like all angry educators, the Montessori deliberately models the behaviors and attitudes that he or she is working to instill in the children. Because of Montessori's emphasis on character development, the Montessori educator typically is personally attractive, exceptionally calm, kind, warm, and is always polite to each child. And the video is not on? There they are. They're talking in there, too. They're just, so this showed up, and the voices didn't, I don't understand that. It was not even on. Outside of the school days, after school. I can try to resend the voices if it helps. I'll try to do that from home. But this came on, I don't understand. I'll try to, so that was the end. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Hamer?
Sorry.
I have a comment. I just know how committed you have been to Montessori for a very, very long time, and I know that the time for this is different.
I can try to resend the voices if it helps. I'll try to do that from home. But this came on, I don't understand. I'll try to... So that was the end. Thank you.
Is there any other questions for Miss Hannah?
Sorry.
I have a comment. I just know how committed you have been to Montessori for a very, very long time, and I know that the time has just been spent. I wish you well and help you with that.
Oh, thank you, Suzanne. It's very nice. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I'd like to... I think we're finishing the 11th year now of Montessori at George Washington. I believe it started in September of 2008, if I'm not mistaken. So I congratulate you on accomplishment. I know that George Washington is an attraction, and Montessori program is an attraction for people to move into the district because they want their children to experience a Montessori education. And I put something on my phone contact with Dr. Padalino. I have something that I wrote down in the comments, something that he said once several years ago, and it was about teaching styles, the difference between a sage on the stage and a guide on the side. I think that's an accurate quote. And so I heard that Dr. Padalino is very supportive of the Montessori educational model, too. So congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
So I noticed a lot of the students are doing floor activities. Do they have a choice, floors, seats?
They do have a choice. The rooms are very small, and in old school, rooms were never built big enough, I guess, who knows why. But the rooms are pretty small, and some of the materials need to be, as you can see, they're huge. And when you have like 20 or 25 children in a room, the lack of space, not just because of the size of the old buildings, makes it a challenge. So a lot of them work out in the hallway as well, because there's no room for the materials.
Now, do they do any testing at all?
State testing, for sure. And we follow the district...
Star testing.
Star testing and assessments, quarterly assessments and benchmarks, yes.
And where is that done? In the classroom?
Yeah.
Separate?
Well, state testing, they break out into other groups, because remember, we're multi-age. So it's a little bit different for us. So the third year's need to go test, to do the testing, and the first and second year's stay in the classroom. But for STAR, they go up as a group, and for the assessments, they're fine. That's never a challenge, really. The challenge is finding the space, but once you've got the space, it's a challenge, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker?
Mr. Mahar, you and I only met today.
Yes, I have your list for you, so...
And in the course of our meeting, one of the teachers brought in a boy who was having a difficult day, making bad choices. And I just watched you and how you embraced him and helped him to turn his day back around, and I knew right away, because I'm a retired principal, that the district was losing the champion.
Oh, I didn't know.
And I just wanted to say, I wish I had more time to get to know you. I'm in, and now you're leaving. But I got to see and miss what I miss about being an elementary school principal, watching you. So thank you.
It's the best gift. It is. I recommended that he apply for the job.
And I informed the principal, I already have the job.
That's a no. Okay. Thank you. Next, we have our Mohar at Second Century Project Board, Dr. K S Q and H B. Oh, and CSR, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
That's okay. I don't think Mike's qualified to do this report. Give him a shot.
Well, thanks for having us on the panel. I appreciate it. I'll talk a little bit about the main phase two, or the current sand, with a few highlight items, and then we'll turn it over to Carly and Doug. One of the highlights is the Field Turf Project. That is going to commence in early May, about three-month duration. This is outside, beginning of the field house and the East Link of Salzman. The contractors selected will be installing the drainage system, electrical pathways for future items in case the district would like to incorporate lighting. But there'll be some provisions for sewage systems out there, fencing, and then eventual turf field. It's a three-month duration, and we'll be finishing beginning of August, August 1st, and time for some school activities in mid-August. Currently, for the main phase two project, we've been holding coordination meetings with contractors. We have a kickoff meeting, talking with Kirk about some things and just keeping them up to speed. We'll shortly start having field trailers on site with the contractors and ourselves. And upcoming work for the summer, these are the maintenance and demolition work. We'll be focusing on a few key areas, such as the boiler room and the fire pump room. And again, just beginning our work process for the next couple of years, and finishing in 2021. Picture of the shop drawing approval of the field. Doesn't tell the whole picture, but it's just a field, what it looks like. And that's maybe just where we are, just getting ready to go to work on main phase two. Now I'm going to turn it over to Carly and Doug, and talk a little bit about Mohar.
I guess just a quick question, and this is picky, but at the center, we're going to have the tiger, right, not the cat?
I'll go back and confirm.
Oh, it's okay, bud. Okay. Or is it true?
It's never the "K".
Good last change.
So you have, you showed on the summer project, demolition on the ground for east half, the first and second floors. How extensive is that demolition going to be? And when will it be, if it's extensive, when will it be constructed back?
So a big picture lies, high school auditorium will come offline this summer. The six-month window turned back to the district by the end of December. We've worked with Kirk and the district about the areas that we need. If you could picture the building, we cut it in half. Mechanical systems, as Kirk may stand, are severed, one side, half the other. So it gives a great opportunity to segregate the building. We grabbed more space on the lower level, basement level, because it allowed us to do it more soon or later. Keeping a few key areas open, like the nurses' area, we'll be focusing that over the summer break, so we may turn that back over to the district. I don't want to put too many bullet points there, but demolition work will be tearing down walls, any of those type of configurations, really mechanical systems, removals and throwbacks. April, spring break of 2020 is when we start turning areas back over. It allows the district to get some slint space, and get another set of areas, open this all the way through until the summer of 2021, the finishing project.
So some construction will take place on east side during the school year?
Yeah.
So segregated from students?
Segregated, yeah. From all the SED regulations that we do all the time about proper segregation between students and staff, means of the aggressive. We put a plan together with the design team, and state ed looks at it. Of all the things they looked at, they want to make sure the building's safe. Any plans we have for phasing meets all the criteria. And again, we're trying to do a balance of accommodating the district needs for glass slint space. I think it's a challenge, both to spend a lot of hours putting that together, and get a good plan for the next couple of years.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to mention? Thank you. Carly?
I'm going to let Doug start tonight with a few updates from Mohar. I'll go through the pictures after he's done.
Okay.
This is, we're in the homestretch at Mohar. Things are starting to finish up. As you can see, the elevator installation will be complete by the end of this month. There actually might be done shortly. Case work installation is complete. It's looking good. The finishes are looking nice. The ceilings of both first and second floor are, first floor is ongoing, the second floor has been completed. Flooring installation, that's again ongoing. And the bathroom fixtures and partition installation is complete now. The window shades are going in, which is a, which will be a big plus. It's a little tricky installation, but it is going well. And then the exterior, the final flashings will be going on in the ceiling, and that will really make the windows pop even a little better than they look now, as we start to cover up all the exposed wood and other trim. So we're on the homestretch.
Between last month and this month, we're going to see a lot more finished spaces in these pictures. This is room up on the second floor next to Dr. Padalino's office. The flooring is done, window paint, or window trim painting is complete. You base along those walls. Ceilings are complete now. Lights are in. Mechanical diffusers are in in the rooms. The building is really starting to take the shape, and everything is starting to look really good. The picture on the left is room 215. It's an admin assistant on the second floor. As you walk, the room in the back is Dr. John Burgess' office, and then there's another office to the left. Then this other picture is a second-floor conference room. This is on the other side of Dr. Padalino's office. The tiles that are left open on the ceiling, they have to come back and be testing and balancing over the mechanical system, but they'll do that next week. They'll start that work. And once they're done, they'll put the last ceiling tiles in. On the first floor, we did the above-ceiling inspection last week. CSR split that. Yesterday and today, they started to close up some of the ceilings on the first floor. This other picture is Dr. Padalino's office. We're protecting the floor, so you see the plastic down right now.
Is that carpet?
It is carpet.
Is it carpet tiles?
Yeah. This is the tax office, the new tax windows. This is from the inside looking out, with the new countertop. This room also gets the same carpet as Dr. Padalino's office. They'll be doing that later this week. This is a security office. This is the window that you'll see when you walk into the building. And then, once you enter the building, you can check in whoever is sitting on the other side through these bar flights. This is the pre-K office casework. As you come in, the pre-K door right here, you'll be able to greet whoever is sitting on the other side as you enter the pre-K area, which is a completely separate entrance. The walkway cover today, they finished framing, or they started framing the underside, closing it off with some framing materials, and then it will get a metal around the whole edge, tying the whole system together. That'll be completed shortly. Doors and hardware throughout the building, all of them are on, except for two of the exterior doors. We're saving those for last, since people are going in and out of those entrances. We would like to keep them intact until you guys get them. This is one of the second-floor bathrooms. This is a single-user bathroom. On the first floor, the partitions are completed today. I don't have a photo of those, but they look identical to this. Again, more doors. Fire alarms have been installed throughout the building, along with wall thermostats. The elevator itself is complete. There's still some testing that needs to be done, some fire, a few fire alarm things need to be completed. And once that's done, once the fire alarm is complete, then the inspection will take place, and that'll be signed off and fully completed. The IT server room, we hooked up this large unit last week, shut the doors in that. Gary has some equipment in there right now, so we shut the doors to keep that area clean, and his equipment is being cooled off to the temperature that he, that that equipment needs to be at. And then this little janitor's closet, this one of the mopsticks upstairs. Does anybody have any questions from Mohar?
Yes.
Can we do another tour?
Which I could do in June, early June.
Will the board, will the board be kind enough?
Yes.
What do you think? The same for June 12?
Four schools closes, right? Four schools closed?
Yes.
Yeah, a question, I asked this question when we did the tour back in March, but I forgot the answer. Is the, is the lighting, is it LED lighting?
Yes.
It's LED throughout?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, darling. Okay, next on the superintendent's report, we have the Teaching and Learning Team led by Mr. Verge will give us our annual summary report.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy to present the annual summary report, and I'd like to welcome Dr. Alyssa Oliveta, also co-present with me. I'm the faculty of the Teaching and Learning Department, so we'll be doing a duet this evening. We have some backup singers at the table. Our annual summary report has become a tradition here in Kingston. Full report was provided to the board in the Board of Education's library. I also want to point out that today, we provided to the district clerk a copy of the presentation, as the presentation won't cover every single slide of the report this evening. We are just highlighting some of the, what we have determined as the highlights and the important information to share with you. Something else I'd like to point out is, why are we doing this in April? Well, we do this in April because New York State does not allow us to publicly present and to share this information until about two weeks ago, when an embargo was lifted by New York State. So that's why we share it now as soon as we can, so we're prepared to do that as soon as the embargo is lifted, and that's the purpose why we schedule it now. The other thing I want to point out is, it doesn't mean we wait to look at the data or use it. We have access to the data as soon as it's available to us, essentially within our own district. So we're using the district instantly to provoke and to guide everything we're doing. So our hope tonight is to share with you what we do with the information within the report, how it informs us, how New York State uses the information, because we know that the effective use of data measures our progress, evaluates our programs and instructional effectiveness, it guides curriculum development and our resource allocations, and essentially, we hope that ensures that every child learns. We're going to take advantage of tonight's annual summary report and also share some additional information and combine this with some recent information that the state shared with us around mid-school year, and we shared this with, I shared this with Dr. Padalino and the board, and to combine how the new accountability system and the changes in ESSA, which is the federal law that requires states to determine how they're going to spend the federal funds. Changes in this law were announced around mid-year to us. So as we go through the presentation tonight, we will share with you some of this information and how the data that we share impacts our accountability status. So districts and schools are measured annually on these indicators. As you can see, they're now using, we're happy to see this, what they, we refer to as multiple measures. Instead of the traditional just English, language, arts, and math, we're really the two main focus areas that districts and schools were held accountable for. We are now held accountable not only in ELA, math, but also science. I meant high school, also social studies, in addition to the other three. English language learner progress in all of our schools is now an indicator, as well as absenteeism in all of our schools. Specifically to the high schools, graduation rate is an indicator, as well as a new accountability indicator called college career and civic readiness. called college career and civic readiness. The move on the state's part is very much in line with what we've been doing here in Kingston, and it's about advancing equity. Um, that has become its primary focus. The new system is designed to identify supports needed to improve, but to also recognize successes. The emphasis is not only on academic achievement, but now it's also specific to student growth, as we mentioned with our quarter two. Data reporting, it's about our students achieving diploma credentials. It's about safe and supportive environments. Um, so we are happy to see these changes in, um, in the state's ESSA accountability system. Um, we welcome them and, um, we are busy. Um, it's, it's, it was not really a big alignment for us because we're already, um, working on many of these areas. But, um, we welcomed the, the direction and leadership by the state to help us better coordinate systems and structures. Um, with the DTSDE continuing to be the foundation, um, for school improvement, um, cycle and, and process. So all of these indicators are becoming a big part of everything we do, um, through our continuous improvement cycle of goal setting, our action steps, um, our progress monitoring, as well as our annual reviews that all schools go through. So our annual summary report is basically divided into two sections, who we are as a district and how we perform. This is district enrollment. You can see that for the 2017-18 school year, our district enrollment was six thousand two hundred and nine students. And you can see over the five years there that there's been a, pretty much a gradual decline over the five years. But last school year, for the first time, we did see, now start to see, um, a very small increase for the first time in five years of about forty-four students. I wanted to point out too, in this information down in the footer, um, we've come a long way with this report to ensure consistency in our reporting. We thank, um, the Teaching and Learning Team for that, as well as our Board of Education and our superintendent. Um, but we remove our pre-K numbers from this because that's how we have been reporting this information consistently now for the last five years. Um, and you can see that our data sources are noted in the footers of the slides. You'll see in this slide, the data source is what we call SERES three thirteen. SERES stands for the Student Information and Repository System. That is a single source that's used local, regional, and at the state level. So that's what our SERES three thirteen report is. You might also see, like you do here, district beds total. BEDS stands for Basic Educational Data System. And BEDS to us is basically defined as the first Wednesday in every, um, in October of every school year, we, we capture the data. I just wanted to point that out. As we move forward, you'll see those sources noted. And then finally, when we'll move forward, um, I need to thank our data department that was created a few years ago. Uh, the team within that department allows us to not only collect, but to analyze, to have access to, and to make sure that we're recording our data accurately and that we have it readily available to us to do our work. Um, so I publicly like to thank our, our Chief Information Officer, Garrett Tomzick, who needs that effort. So a little bit more about enrollment. This chart is our five-year percent change in our number of students in our accountability subgroups. So there are ten accountability subgroups that the state holds us accountable for. This shows the five-year percent change in our students. You can see three of our subgroups have, we've seen a decline over that five year. And all the other subgroups, we are seeing an increase. And obviously, what jumps out at all of us on this slide is that over five years, our English language learner subgroup has increased dramatically, um, by eighty-two percent.
And due to this dramatic, um, increase, um, due to this dramatic increase of eighty-two percent, our district is responding and our, our buildings are responding to this. And I will keep talking about what we're doing at individual buildings. But at the high school, um, this past year, we have implemented a SIF program, which is a program that, it stands, SIF stands for Students With Interrupted Inconsistent Formal Education. So this, um, this program is now allowing students to be instructed on, on what their specific needs are coming into school.
Can I have a question about that last slide? Is, um, for instance, the students with disabilities, is that four percent, is that percentage points? Or is that a percent over the, um, the I U five years ago?
There's a change over five years.
Percentage change.
Percentage change.
So the next slide talks about our enrollment history of our English language learners. Again, just to drill down a little bit, um, a little bit deeper, you can see over our, about six years here. And even the last graph, um, or bar which can be put on there that shows us our, uh, English language learners as of just about a week or so before our spring break of this school year, um, being up at four hundred and eighty-six. That's current. Um, as of this report though, our data, our numbers were three hundred and seventy. So as you can see, um, from last school year's BEDS day, October of twenty seventeen, to the present, um, we have, um, seen an increase of about one hundred and sixteen English language learners in the Kingston School District. I'd like to also point out that these numbers do not reflect our Ls who are currently not receiving services because they have tested out. So these are the students who are only right now qualified for receiving services. Um, this, this obviously is a big part of our school review process and everything that we're doing in terms of our improvement efforts. Our next slide is our grade level distribution of our English language learners, again, from the twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen school year. So that we're talking with three hundred and seventy total students. We just wanted to point out one more time, we're currently at four hundred and eighty-six, um, but this data reflects the three hundred and seventy. And obviously, we can see that the biggest population, the biggest group of these students are in our lowest grades, kindergarten through second grade.
And with that large, uh, population in our lower grades, um, Dr. Falcella has been moving forward with our, uh, pre-K that will be starting in September and feel that this will really benefit, um, our pre-K students. As well as, um, we're in year two at our Chambers pilot program where the, the core structure for K one is grouped together and, uh, grade one, two is grouped together. And there's a large population of L students, of our Gen students. And what this, what this, uh, pilot program actually allows our students to have more resources and more time with push-ins, um, with reading specialists as well as our ENL teachers. It also provides grouping to be associated with, you know, their language proficiency level, not just their grade level. And it's also challenging our general education students. Often, we're seeing, um, some turnkey from a general education student helping, um, a student that is an L student. So it's, it's becoming a, a very effective program.
Can I ask a, a question about that program? Have we seen enough data to draw conclusions from that program as to whether or not we should be increasing that? Or is it too early to tell?
Um, there is discussion, um, moving this toward into, um, a grade two, three program for next year. And we are seeing, um, an increase in our, in our reading results.
Would we use that model in the other buildings that have higher L populations, or aren't we ready to do that?
It's potential.
So right now, um, we're, we're looking at the data compared to, as you know, last year was the first year of the pilot program at Chambers. This year, we have, we saw some preliminary excess, um, increases. But, um, the difficulty is that the numbers and the population changes every year. So this year, we saw a larger group, or last year, we had a large number of kindergarteners. This year, we have a large number of first graders, and their levels are all different. So it's, I think we need some longitudinal data to really look at whether or not. I mean, right now, what we are doing is we are maximizing our resources as, as a district. And we are giving the students more than they're entitled to and, you know, more with this model. So, um, all students are benefiting from this model. But as far as, if I could compare last year to this year, not yet. Uh, it's been, you know, complete because of the difference in the, um, you know, levels of the students and the numbers at each grade level.
Thank you.
And that's gonna be my question because it looks like the graph reflects intensive early intervention has a great effect on the number of children who may be testing out, which is why your numbers are lower the, the higher you go up in grades because you're really hitting them with, with a great deal of services right at the beginning, as, as was said. I, I think your graph reflects success.
Well, we don't know how many of those students go had early intervention or when, if they came in third grade.
Yeah, this is, well, the students test in or out of, when they enter as, as a five-year-old student. So typically, our students, uh, most of our kindergarten, first graders are coming directly from the home. So they will test in and then, but how quickly they test out of their need for ENL services, that's a good indicator. So typically, we, we range, the language you look at, five to seven years, uh, to really have a command, you know, a solid command of the English language. So we're seeing that trend. And by third grade, they're starting to, to drop off.
And the longitudinal study that you just spoke of would, would let us know how that's happening. We can see that something's happening. The longitudinal study will tell us exactly what and how it's happening so we can repeat success.
And I think going down two different roads here, just to bring in the, the pre-K program, looking at dual language and expanding that through the district as well. So even that, Dr. Falcella, so that's the Ferrari of the, of the program. So this may kind of evolve into that eventually.
So this year, the, uh, the building reviews were both state-led at JFK and Miller. And my co-partner, Beth Lewis, the Director of Special Education, we have been, um, the district representatives during the state review. Um, and we actually learned a lot from being at those reviews, which allowed us to then kind of turnkey that. And we are leading all of the building reviews this year. And from what we learned during the state reviews, we're now, um, kind of mirroring that procedure. And that procedure is much different than what has happened, um, during building as well as state reviews in the past. I feel that they are very, um, effective and a lot more friendly. And what happens during these reviews now, there's always those, you know, class observations. But what is now happening is, um, many interviews with, with the stakeholders, so the, the principal, um, as well as the students, the parents, um, the teachers. And all of those conversations that we're having in this interview process will allow us then to, um, come up with what they call quick wins. These quick wins are something that is implemented pretty much right away. And that report is actually generated, given to the principal within a day after the review is completed. And all of those quick wins are then implemented. Along with that are short-term priorities. Those take, you know, maybe, maybe a month out, and they may be more detailed. The long-term report comes a few weeks later, um, and that is really building upon the successes that the building is already established, um, as well as providing and addressing the needs to move the building in a, in a more proficient way. The report also generates what the stakeholders and, and what their perspective of what the needs are to drive that building in the right direction.
Our next slide is our racial/ethnic distribution by school. A lot of information there, but we have all of our schools with our district being in the, the far right column. And then our accountability or ethnic/racial, um, categories to the left. Just wanted to point out that JFK, Chambers, George Washington, um, and Edson remain, um, our most diverse schools, um, with our middle schools, um, showing, showing, um, a pretty similar, uh, distribution. Our next slide is free and reduced lunch enrollment sorted from low to high, um, total enrollment. I'd like to point out here, you can see that we range from about thirty-five, thirty-five percent all the way up to seventy-six percent free and reduced lunch. So it's a pretty, pretty big range, um, with Kingston City School District obviously being right in the middle of our ten schools at about fifty-six percent. And, um, important to just remind everyone that we also have six schools participating in the community eligibility, um, school lunch program. Those schools would be Chambers, GW, uh, JFK, Edson, and, uh, both middle schools.
So just to jump in for a quick second, that community eligibility, I mean, every student receives free breakfast and free lunch in those schools. And while the chart shows free and reduced, we do not have reduced lunch in Kingston. If you get, if you qualify for reduced, you get free. We sup, we, we supplement that through our, our, um, our food service program, the, the difference of what the reduced costs a day. So if you're, if you're free, you get the free breakfast and lunch. If you're reduced, you get the free breakfast and lunch. Sorry.
Thank you. This slide is new to the annual summary report because it is a new accountability indicator by New York State. It shows the percentage of our all-students subgroup, um, who missed ten percent or more of enrolled school days from last school year, also known as chronically absent ESSA accountability indicator. Obviously, you can see the information here, these percentages and numbers, um, they certainly reflect higher numbers than any of us want to see. We all value and know how important, uh, the annual school is. Um, and this is also, again, a very important, um, indicator and component of our school reviews that are ongoing. Um, and essentially, what happens with all of our indicators is, once the state looks at all of this, um, and has, has some formulas and some, uh, and, and charts, um, then levels are assigned to each school based on their, um, current, uh, percentage of stu, of students. And again, there, this is the data I'm showing you for all students, but then this is also broken out to us by all the other nine subgroups. Um, so we have that information available to all of us, and all of that is, um, certainly can share with our principals right now so that we can continue to, um, you know, continue to make an impact in this. Oh, I'm sorry.
This slide is, is pretty, um, dramatic, actually. And when you, when you talk to, I mean, attendance is everything's kind of been a push in the district for a long time, or for several years. And, and I feel that in some, um, moments, we've had schools kind of getting up and talking about their area. Attendance is usually in the low nineties, and then you see this and it's like, wow, that's actually kind of a big deal. So I imagine that this really helps us think about how to target this issue in a different kind of way.
Andrew?
These numbers are pretty huge.
As predicted, I said, this is the slide that's probably gonna have a lot of attention. Um, and it should because it, it got ours. I mean, when we received the data, um, the calls came right in from our principals and, and Garrett and the team were together talking about this. It just almost didn't seem right, you know, it didn't make sense. But this is really about the equity that New York State is talking about to really bring it down to this level. Because we, you're right, we have reported proudly that our schools are ninety-five percent, um, or, or thereabout. So this is, you know, when, when we really talked about this with our principals, um, and they went back, um, to their edu platforms and began to really look at the data, sure enough, there, there it was. So this is, this has been an eye-opener for us for sure. But I think the good news is, we have the information now. We're looking at it, like I said, in a much different way, which certainly is aligned with, with all the work we have been doing and allows us to start, um, putting some things in place, you know, right away. And, and that has happened as, as part of.
We, you know, we have people at the middle schools and the high school that really work on tenders. And, and it's looking from these data that that's actually very sorely needed at the other elementary schools too. I would, it'd be interesting to see if, what the distribution is by grade, but that's, I understand that.
Yeah, that could be a whole other presentation and happy to do that. Yeah, that could be a whole other presentation and happy to do that.
So along with this chronic absenteeism during the school reviews, we did, of course, look deeper at this chronic absenteeism. And I have to remind you, and we didn't say this earlier, all of my, all of the quick wins that come from the building reviews actually come from the stakeholders. So the questions in, in the interviews really pertain to how are we gonna drive that, the building forward in, you know, each category and one of them being this chronic absenteeism? So among we ask the stakeholders, parents, teachers, students, how can we increase attendance? So a few of the things that came out of from JFK and Chambers, they actually think that providing a phone call or a text message to parents and actually thanking them for recognizing the importance of having their child at school, that's already been implemented. Also generating initiatives, not just for students, but for parents. A monthly pizza or, or something to get their child to come to school. Chambers is also implementing and using data to take a look at specific students that are definitely chronically absent and compare them to an average student that is attending and mailing that information home. At GW during our review there, the stakeholders expressed that part of the problem of students not attending school is that they don't have clean clothes to wear. So that was an eye-opener for a lot of us. And when I came back and discussed this with Dr. Catalino, he graciously said, oh, we'll buy and install a washer and dryer. So we are working on that process. The PTO has also, has provided laundry bags for this process to be carried out.
So now we're getting to into how are we performing in terms of our, our assessments? This slide is our English Language Arts percent proficiency as defined by scoring at level three or four. And this shows our breakout by grade for last school year. And we are required, I guess you'd say by New York State, to administer this assessment in grades three through eight. And it is, aim is to measure our students' learning and their ability to, to learn the standards. This is important information for accountability purposes as it's included in academic achievement. It's included in our student growth indicator and as well as an indicator that's referred to as academic progress. We certainly are looking at our information here and we'd like to see certainly hi- higher levels of performance. But we do see a trend over, over the three years that are shown there in the right direction, with the exception of grade five.
So grade five, as you know, is a transition year. Students often struggle socially, emotionally, behaviorally, academically. We are looking deeper into this. We have formed a committee of teachers and administration to really start discussing and implementing and helping these students transition from elementary school into, into middle school. We also implemented a reading block, as you know, for grade five, six this year. We will be analyzing those results and seeing that impact by the end of the year. We can gather some data to see if, if it's, if that's even enough time to, to evaluate an impact. We've also implemented a, a software program called iXL ELA in grades four through six. And this will also allow for that transition for students to become activated to a program that they're going to be often using in their ELA course.
This is, this is interesting also because you actually, yes, grade five certainly is a dip, the grade four is also, and that's really reflected in the data that we talked about at TNL. We looked at our, at the STAR data. We looked at some of the more local data that we use that, that, and, you know, there's a transition between third and fourth grade also, maybe not in physical terms, but certainly academically. And so it looks like that's another, that's really a focus also.
This slide is pretty much the same thing, but in the area of math, again, percent proficient as defined as levels three and four by grade. Once again, we, slightly higher overall in terms of proficiency levels with, again, concerns, again, at, at a few of the grades, but grade five, again, showing a decrease. You'll see, notice the grade eight also jumps out with very low numbers. And that's due to the fact that you'll see in the far right, the number of students that take the Common Core Algebra One eighth-grade Regents. I think in a later slide, we have the actual number of students, but a large number of them taking it and also doing very well, performing at levels three, four, and five, which is defined as proficient.
So they don't take the standard state assessment?
No. So we've also implemented on the opposite days of the next slide, we've also implemented a math block. And this is to incorporate small group learning and to specific needs of those students. Last year, we implemented a program called iXL Math, which was, which was to be very effective. Students actually love to use the program and it really drills down specifically to standards. We've also implemented this year, just recently into grade four, the iXL Math program, again, building that transition in the programs that they'll be using as a middle school.
Just noting in the footer that I think it says ninety-four students who took the Common Core One. This is our grades three through eight, New York State, English Language Arts, and math, side by side, percent of students scoring at each performance level. And our four performance levels, level one being below proficiency, level two being partially proficient, level three being proficient, and level four being excelling at the state standards at that particular grade level. And just to point out, New York State did change in this school year to a two-session test design and, and changes in their performance standards. So again, difficult to compare this information to prior school years, but this will serve as a new baseline for us. However, we are aware of the performance of our county schools partners as well as statewide results. And we are, are concerned with level one performance pretty much across all our grades, specifically at, at the upper grade levels, five, five through seven, five through eight. And Kingston did show a higher level of level ones than, than did the state or the county schools. So that's something that we continue to, I look to address. Dr. Jacobo?
I, I see, you know, I know that you addressed grade eight math and how our high performance kids get pulled out because there's an honors class there, but that's, that's really to have four percent of your kids proficient in math. And then it makes me wonder, so ELA in eighth grade, you know, that's better, but that then includes those kids who are in the honors class. And I wonder if we're paying enough attention to the kids who are non-honors kids in that, in those grades. And then it makes me wonder how much of, you know, what's carrying the rest of the higher numbers in, in the other grades? And whether we're, you know, are we giving enough attention to the kids who are average?
Yeah, a lot to think about and certainly a lot to talk about and plan.
Because then we know, because they're gonna have to pass the Regents also. They'll just do it the next year. And if we have five percent and we're just proficient, it's, it's hard.
Yeah. So in response to, in response to some of these results, and I know it is daunting, myself along with my team of assistant directors and instructional coaches have really looked at last year's data and really pulled out all of the deficiencies and correlated them with the standards. And then instructional coaches have actually developed with the teachers specific lessons to drill down on those skills and standards that were showing deficiency in our test results.
Do you do longitudinal tracking of students, individual students from year to year in terms of the assessment levels?
Can you repeat that?
Oh, do you do longitudinal tracking of students from year to year on their state assessment levels?
We do. We also do longitudinal studies on specific standards and if there are showing deficiencies year after year. And I actually did see that trend of specific skills and standards that have shown longitudinally deficiency and that is something that we are now addressing. So along with our building reviews, something that actually came out of the interviews with parents, came the, you know, the, the inability to help their child with homework. It's, it's a daunting task when you're trying to help your child and the way you learn math is not the way that your child is learning it. It's much different. So our instructional coaches have now put up on our school websites, specific lessons and videos that go, that correlate back to the instruction by unit and by topic. So it's now easily accessed for parents to take a look on how the math is being instructed to better help their child at home with homework.
We don't usually wait to be notified. So, so how are parents notified about this? Because I, this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I have four kids in the district.
So this is, like I said, this is just coming out of our building reviews, I mean, within the last few weeks. There will be text blasts about this to my colleagues.
It'll be a great resource.
So I feel that we are using data more than ever to really drive our instruction, to really talk about where we are at right now currently and where do we need to get to. Data meetings occur, you know, teacher to teacher as well as administration, district administration, to building principals. And I have sat with each building principal and talked about all of the deficiencies that have shown up on our state tests for ELA, math, and science. They then presented that data to their faculty and also, again, to reemphasize, the instructional coaches did work with teachers to develop these lessons to really target those standards that were showing deficiency. The evaluation of impact with this process, I'm hoping that after, you know, this round of tests that we're doing now, I'm hoping those lessons that teachers implemented with instructional coaching support do make a positive impact. For next year, after looking at our current state testing that's going on now, we plan to kind of get a head start on, over summer, looking at this data and figuring out, you know, what buildings are showing proficiency in certain standards and coupling them up during grade level meetings with buildings that may be struggling with those standards and, and sharing those best practices because I feel we can really learn a lot from each other.
This shows our science, four years of proficient, percent proficiency, again, levels three and four from 2015 through 2018. It's part of the commissioner's regulation that all schools in New York State will administer an elementary and intermediate science assessment. So that's why we do it at grades four and eight. And again, wanted to point out this information, though it's always been included, is now part of the composite performance or academic achievement index as part of the accountability indicator. So science is now included in that calculation. You can see that our grade four shows, shows consistent proficiency around mid-eighty percent and our grade eight somewhere in the, in the low to, to mid-fifty percent of that range.
Is there any indication of a change, of a difference in teaching between four and eight in science that, that grade four is such an eighty percent level? Is there, is there more hands-on learning or something like that in grade, in grade four and up very early elementary?
Well, you have to remember that in grade eight, our advanced students are taking the earth science Regents exam and they are not taking the eighth-grade science test. Yes, you can see here, you know, with the different levels, our, you know, our advanced students are really excelling in, I will tell you, this is a very hard Regents. I taught this class for fourteen years and this is an extremely hard Regents. And our advanced kids are really doing well in it. So science actually, right now is a very exciting time. As you know, our science standards are changing to the New York State Science Learning Standards. We have, we have already implemented them in grade five last year. And along with this, these new standards, it's not just new content, it's also a brand-new teaching style. It is more student inquiry. It's really the, students are really learning, they are questioning, and they are really learning through exploration. And it's really how science should be really taught and learned. Grade five teachers last year were faced with this as they came in the door. And I really have to tell you that I am so proud of them and how they really executed this. And with the help and assistance of Marin Malgeri, our instructional coach at that level, I have to say, you know, kudos to all of them. Grade six is implementing content as well as instructional practices, student inquiry-based practices. Grade three will be next, starting next year with new content as well as these new instructional practices. Everybody else will be focusing on the instructional practice of student inquiry. Really, when we take a look at these new standards, the, the way the instruction occurs is the largest portion of this shift. And it's not just the content that's shifting. We're looking ahead to our assessments coming up for science. The new science test for grade five will be predicted, predicted right now for June of 2022. That year has changed twice in the last two years, so hopefully we'll stick with that. The first year of the Regents exam will start with earth science and living environment in 2023, followed by physics and chemistry the following year.
This is our three-year trend for percentage at each scoring level on what we call the NICEs slot. Also stands for the New York State English as a Second Language Achievement Test. It is, this particular assessment assesses English proficiency for our English Language Learner students in grades K through twelve. And again, part and included now as an accountability indicator for all of our schools. Basically, the indicator is determined as a calculation that provides what they call a success ratio. And that is determined based on the percentage of students who are meeting their individual targets at each of these, at, at each of these levels.
So again, part of our building reviews are really focused on our Ls. And some of the quick wins that came out of our reviews at Miller, they have increased pictorial representation, visual cues that tie in with the content. At KHS, we have really increased the ability for students in the, in the L classrooms to learn about how to be more involved in their school community, whether it's a play, whether it's a sport, intramurals. Teachers have expressed the need or want to do some peer visits into their colleagues' classrooms and seeing what, what they're doing there for best practices. Parents requested graduation requirements. Parents requested graduation requirements spelled out in both English and Spanish and as well as events being placed on our building Facebook in both English and Spanish. At GW, we'll be PD during faculty meetings based on best practices and, and teacher-to-teacher PD. And part of the short-term priorities in assisting our Ls at KHS, additional PD, as well as the development of an orientation. I feel like this is very important for our, our new coming L students coming into our, not only the country but our, our school. They're faced with, you know, fear and anxiety. So it's going to be a student-led orientation team that welcomes these students, shadows these students, provides a tour of the building, provides information about procedures, finding their way around the school, building a sense of belonging in their school. At GW, we're going to be doing some more PD on the bilingual progression. And parents also at GW expressed that they would like to have information in the report card on student growth, on their, on their language proficiency.
This is the average score on AP exams. AP is our advanced placement courses. This particular slide shows eight of our exam results, though we do offer, I believe it's 14 different courses. This slide only shows the performance of eight of them because the others had fewer than 15 results. AP exams obviously take place at the end of an AP course and the exam is to assess student learning and also determine whether or not the student earns college credit. They can score anywhere from a one to a five, with usually a student scoring at level three would earn them college credit through or higher. And you can see in the last three courses here, we do rather well. Calculus, BC, AB, and also physics, course C, mechanics. This is our traditional regents exam results. I use the word tradition, I guess, just to point out that there's still the traditional regents exams that are graded based on the numeric grades. Pointing out here that about, about seventy-five percent or three-quarters of our, our students are passing the, what we define as sixty-five percent or higher, with the exception being our chemistry regents. So we continue to watch that and monitor that and to point out our great performance in physics, with about ninety-three percent, I believe, scoring or passing. And these are common core regents exam results and this graph shows the percent of students scoring at each of the performance levels, with those levels being defined on the right. I guess I'd point out that since the Common Core learning standards were introduced in 2014, these new exams have continued to be rolled out and with changes in scoring from the numeric of the traditional to the levels, as I pointed out. And you can see here, excuse me, that a majority of our students are scoring at level three or higher, which is, level three is partially meet grade level expectations, but the level that's required for our regents diploma criteria. And then this is our three-year trend for regents exams passing rate, again, being sixty-five percent or higher. The first three regions there are no longer administered. That's why you don't see the additional information. Again, we watch chemistry because those numbers have dipped and are kind of lower than where we would like to see them. I do want to point out, though, in geometry, though, over the three years, we've seen, over the three-year, we've seen an increase, almost a thirty percentage point increase specifically in geometry. And, and all the others are showing right around a high seventy percent passingly.
So during our building reviews, we focused somewhat on academic performance and at KHS, a lot of our students expressed that sometimes they can't come to the after-school reviews for our regents. So we implemented during our, the lunch support to have regents review opportunity for all students. As I expressed earlier about the math videos, and Chambers also is incorporating maybe a shift in the culture and the importance of STAR testing. So over the last two years, I've talked about how we're using our data to drive our instruction. We've been using the Datamate program to analyze our data. This year, we've, we've implemented a more of a proactive approach. Teachers are, after every common assessment, discussing their results with their, their peers. And what they are also discussing this year is what was, what were the deficiencies for the upcoming unit? So now we can address those deficiencies before we're teaching. So really defining what they are and shifting our instruction to really drill down on those deficiencies. So this year, we also implemented a program where all of the data, the data meetings and all of the minutes that go along with that are posted in EdgeView for all teachers and all administrations to be able to access. And what this is now providing is an opportunity for teachers to do some disciplinary lessons. So for an example, if in a science data meeting, students were struggling with analyzing graphs, well, a math teacher on that same grade level could take a look at that and say, well, I can incorporate some additional instruction on analyzing graphs. They're struggling in science. We can now spiral down and across curriculum to drill on those deficiencies.
So this is our total 2014 cohort, percent proficient after four years of instruction. Our 2014 cohort, I guess, can be defined as our students who are entering grade nine in the year 2014. So I want to point out, this includes all Kingston City School District students, so this is not only Kingston High School. You can see the five regions that are required for the regents diploma are the assessments that we show and the accountability subgroups, how each of those groups perform on each of those assessments. Basically, all, all students are performing somewhere between about seventy and eighty percent on all of our, of all of those regions, with science being above eighty percent. And this is our five-year trend for four-year or also our August graduation rates. Again, this is for the entire district, not only Kingston High School. And again, graduation rate is now like a part of our accountability indicator system as part of ESSA. Wanted to certainly notice here the thirteen percentage point decrease in our Hispanic subgroup graduation from 2017 to 2018. Also wanted to mention our students with disabilities, the increase of seven point five percentage points from 2017 to 2018. And also point out that our students with disabilities have increased approximately twenty percentage points from the year 2015, when we were at the lowest graduation rate in, in those five years. This is our breakdown of diplomas and commencement credentials. Again, this is part of the new accountability system and the, and indicator. It's called College Career and Civic Readiness Indicator. They are using this information to basically measure how schools are preparing students to be ready for college, career, and civic engagement. So again, there's a, there's a calculation that gives full credit for students who earn a regents diploma, extra credit for students who earn regents with advanced, and even partial credit for students who are earning credential, commencement credentials or high school equivalency, partial credit. So the aim is that I'm keeping those students in school and on track gradually. We're almost done. Thank you for your attention. I think one of our final slides here is our postgraduate plans for our completers in 2018. You see about eighty percent of our students go on to college, about nine percent of them seek employment, and about three percent of them go into our military. And finally, to kind of tie all of this up, it's a lot of information here, but how all of that impacts our accountability status, it does it in this way. As a result of all of these subgroups and all of the indicators mentioned tonight, based on this data, our, the Kingston City School District is labeled as a target district because we have schools within our district who meet the criteria for what are called CSI or TSI schools. But we're also a target district because our subgroups are Black and African-American, our Hispanic-Latino, and our economically disadvantaged subgroups have basically underperformed and not performed at a level that the state would consider at a, at a level to be acceptable. So these are areas of focus for us to continue to, to work for. And then we have five schools that have also been identified, two of them as CSI, which stands for Comprehensive Support and Improvement. And the reason they're that category is because they're all students subgroup have also met certain scenarios in, in those indicators. So because they're all students meet that, that makes them a CSI school. And also because they were formerly known as a focus school, that also qualifies them. But you can see for Miller, they also qualify because of other subgroups. And then Chambers, Crosby, and J. Watson Valley are considered TSI or, or target support improvement schools. Again, these are different label because other subgroups other than all students, again, met that same standard. So you can see the different schools and different subgroups. Now, I just wanted to point out, the reason we put the 2019-20 information up there is these are projections that all of our other schools that are not listed in the top tier are considered schools in good standing for this school year. But we do know that based on George Washington, JFK, and Kingston High School, based on their performance and the results of last year, that if we don't see an improvement in those particular subgroups and, and specific indicators, that they are in, in jeopardy, jeopardy with potential TSI schools for the 2019-20 school year based on those subgroups. I hope that makes sense.
Does that mean the others would come, or did the others come off?
The ones on top?
Yeah.
No, once, once you're on this list as a CSI school, you're on it for three years. This, the 2019-20 school year being the first year.
So JFK is going to transfer to become a TSI school and not a CSI school?
No, CSI is a more, yeah, more intensive category.
Right, and so JFK will kind of move down, maybe?
They would remain CSI school, but they would just have additional subgroups added to their category, I guess is the best way to put it.
So which is the, which is the most important, TSI or CS?
CSI. So when we talk about the state-led reviews, those were done at the CSI level. So the state is coming in and leading the reviews at the CSI level. So comprehensive support and improvement. And again, that's because they're all students category met those conditions, whereas the TSI schools, they were only in perhaps one or a few other subgroup areas. It is confusing, however, the help is that it gets very specific. It, it tells us exactly, I mean, not that we didn't know this, but the state is giving it, here it is, this is what we're identifying you for. So we have, you know, it gives us a chance to, you know, just to start running with that information.
Do you think that the, for KHS, it looks like the, the subgroup is ALLs, but do you think that's driven by the Acres and Science students that are in?
Yes, I do feel that and, you know, they are also held to the same graduation standards as everybody else.
Throughout the presentation, which, again, we thank you for your attention. We did recognize our teaching and learning team and, and all of the people that, that worked with all of this information, but I think it goes without saying, we must thank our teachers, the support staff, our principals. Their consistent, constant work and dedication to everything they do on a, on a daily basis to making, making sure we're responsible to meet the needs of all of our students is, is the most important work that we give. Are there any additional questions? Again, thank you for your attention.
I just want to thank you for very, for the response, but it was very good. And it was comprehensive and thoughtful and I really, and gave you, and I really appreciate the presentation and all the information and we have a lot of work to do.
I want to echo a lot of the Jacobi's, but I also want to say that I think it's really important information, as you said before, and I know that people in the schools are working really hard and really dedicated to what they're doing. And I think that hopefully this data will really enable them to focus on those things that they, that they need to. But I also think that we have to remember that just because some student, or some students can, not all students will. And these numbers reflect lots of need and, and I think that, that that's important to recognize as well.
Thank you. I'm positive, we, we know our data, we have our data available to us, and most of us were in a meeting a few weeks ago where there was something on the, on the screen that said data is not the hammer, it's the flashlight. And that's really the change in how we use our data. And it's a, it's a change in culture, you know, within our organization that it isn't about catching and, you know, it's, it's about knowing what our information is and then using that, obviously to shed light on that and to address that.
Because it has to be in context of who the kids are.
Yeah, I was going to say, tough to watch a slideshow with, like, this with a lot of data compared to when we have the, the short video clips of all of our students and the relationships and the interactions and all of those really important pieces that aren't captured in data collection necessarily. And, and that's why it's called school.
Just, I have a quick question, but first of all, yes, you've given us, I think it's very important for a support board to have all this and it's a lot of information, but also you presented it really well, taking the time to explain it to us, and I thank you for that. I just, I, I keep looking, of course we all are, at the Ls and I noticed with the graduation rate, the breakdown we have for Hispanic population, and I assume, I think we all do, that most of our Ls are from that area of the world, but we're getting other language-speaking students as well, correct? So do we have that broken down or is that just a very small segment of the population? The increase in the English language laws?
Are you referring specific to graduation rate?
Yeah, graduation rate, that's what I was looking at.
So specifically to what language that they're speaking?
I'm just saying, I see we have a breakdown for economically disadvantaged, Black, African-American, and Hispanic-Latino. I was just wondering if, you know, I don't have the answer right now, but I would assume that there's other language-speaking students in that population.
So in speaking to our, our L graduation rate, is that kind of what we're referring to? So, yeah, so 2018, we had a sixteen percent graduation rate and this year, we are projected for our L students at 10%.
Right. I'm just curious, though, is it all, they're not all Hispanic, there's other?
Correct.
We just don't have that.
Do we measure based on what the state, what the report card, so that's my thinking.
But we can, we can definitely get that. No, I was just, just to get a picture of, I know it's, you know, it seems like the majority of these new immigrants are coming from a specific area, but I think that there's other, I know there's Persians-speaking students.
We track all that information and we have it in our program, our new program elevation that we're using, so it'll be more accessible to us because it's not what we report out from the state, but we do record it and.
from the state, but we do record it and for new schools. So we are now looking, and we can tell you at every regular company what the native language, home language is for all those students.
I just think it presents more of a challenge for our faculty and staff.
And while the state doesn't break it down, it's not part of our report card, one of our other challenges is even if some of our students or our Latino students who are coming from, probably coming from the same area are speaking different dialects, that we don't even have an opportunity, or we don't even know how or the resources to get our, get our hands around that. So even within our Hispanic, so that's Latino subgroups, we have multiple dialects being spoken.
It was an outstanding, oh, it's not, I'm going to see what it says, outstanding, outstanding representation, but I also know, being on the other end, being a principal, that these were a broad strokes, that it's the disaggregation of the data that you present to principals that drives intervention, that's the real key, and probably all the meetings you've been having all year long, because all this data can be turned down to a child. And I, we all know that that's the key, that, to create the program to, for advancement.
And those meetings do occur?
They have to, I'm not going to posit that they have to, otherwise the data just lays there.
So I like this format. Is it, are you satisfied with it, that it's something that you can use and follow in years, because sometimes it's frustrating when the annual summer report drastically changes format from one year to the next.
Yeah, we're definitely comfortable with this format. It almost, it builds itself as the reports and the information comes into, to Gary and the team in the data department, it creates this presentation essentially for us. So, you know, there's always room to improve, and we're always looking to do that, but we are very comfortable with it, and we love the template, for sure.
I could get the graphs at a hundred percent.
Okay, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Montes, it was wonderful. Which brings us to the Kingston School District budget resolutions. So I'll entertain a motion for the 68, which is the annual school district budget, first. Okay, any discussion?
I just wanted to reiterate that this is a budget that really allows us to keep all of the programs that we add, are there any, will we lose any staff in this?
There's no cuts to the program or personnel by either, by, not even by attrition, so they're.
So I'm really thrilled that we're able to do that, especially in such part, at such a time, so really appreciate the focus on keeping us, and keeping the richness in all the programs that we have, and not having to.
Launching and increasing.
Any other questions or questions, discussion?
Yes, Mr. Shonestock.
I think it's great that you're able to say, Dr. Peddle, you know, that we don't have a reduced lunch price, but it's probably the only, one of the few districts that can afford that, and our lunch budget is in black, consistently, for the last several years, and there's not very many districts where that's the case.
Any further extension? All right, all those in favor of B-68, please provide a say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Okay, hold on to B-69, which is the property tax report card, all H.A. motion. Discussion?
I would like to add something about the tax saving. I managed like five years in a row now, able to keep the tax saving under the two percent cap, and that's, you know, very beneficial for our taxpayers.
Thank you, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting property tax report card, please provide a say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and lastly, we have the, we have the 2018-18 BOSI's election and budget resolutions, BOE-62, the election of BOSI's board members, and fiscal impact. All honor to your motion.
Someone, second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to thank the people willing to serve on the BOSI's board.
I'd like to just acknowledge that Patrick Rousch is not selected, is not selected by the New Paul's district to continue his service, and he's been, I think he's there eight years, and he's made a lot of contributions to BOSI's.
All right, all those in favor of BOE-61, please signify their say aye. Mrs. Jordan's motion, which we can't call those, willing to serve on the BOSI's board. Thank you very much. Which brings us to the consent agenda.
What happened? Did the BOSI's board members?
No, we didn't do the administrative budget.
Okay, yeah. Okay, and we're still on BOE-63, excuse me, we're not, issue the barrier. The approved full, of the BOSI's administrative budget. All honor to your motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, signify their say aye. Opposed, abstentions. And now, we'll move on to consent agenda. Are there any resolutions that any trustee would like pulled? Okay, are there any? All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify their say aye. Opposed, abstentions. Mr. Spicer?
Can I just make a comment? So on the consent agenda, there are many longstanding staff and features and all kinds of people who've contributed so many years, and I just want to thank them all for their service and hope that they have a healthy retirement.
I think we all echo that, they're all invited to attend the tenure celebration in, or the tenure. Well, it is a tenure and retirement celebration, in hope that they do come.
Just one other, I just wanted to comment that also on the consent agenda was the approval of our, of our annual trip, and just, if anyone had any questions for Ms. Crossbar, she's here, just don't worry. And if not, that's fine, we've been through this, but she did want to make herself available, and was very patient, sat at the last round.
So this is the Nobel Prize?
Yes, this is the Nobel Prize.
Director, you'd like to tell us about that trip?
We don't have, I'm sorry. This is the third summit that Kingston High School, oh boy, the third summit that Kingston High School's been invited to, that was not a summit last year, which is why we haven't seen you since the one that took us to Columbia in January of 2017. This is being held in Mariah, New Mexico, and we have just begun the application process for our students, which normally come with a contingency of students to present to you, but it's sort of weird timing, and when the application fell, and you don't have a cohort of carryovers, which is only open to students who will be juniors and seniors at the time. But this one is in September in Mexico, and we're very excited, and while it is missing a couple of school days, we're optimistic that, A, it's not a banned weekend, we confirm that, so we're good to go in that arena, and it's only going to be missing a few days of school in the beginning of the school year, widely agreed to be the best time of year to not be fair, so we're excited.
Yeah, so the students will be missing four days, so the conference is Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so the kids will be leaving a day early, and come back a day after.
Right, so a lot of that is still, like, in the air, I was speaking with one of the program directors today, and their planning meeting is in May, so the Youth World Day is going to be that Thursday, and then the summit is the Friday, Saturday, Sunday. We don't know how late it goes Sunday, or the availability of flights out, because we haven't been able to do that yet, so some of it will depend upon that. And we always try to build into historical site scene as well.
And you will come with the students?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we're being so patient, waiting for someone. I went, wow. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Oh, that was your question.
Okay, so Mr. Spicer, your descriptions?
I have a description of this month's grants and awards for board acceptance on as follows. The J.F. Kennedy Elementary School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the Community Foundation of Hudson Valley in the amount of $2,000. The George Washington Elementary School is the recipient of a generous grant award from Target Field Trips in the amount of $700, and J. Watson Bailey Middle School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the teaching, from the teaching the Hudson Valley in the amount of $1,800, $822.
It's interesting that we have three different organizations in a substantial conference.
Thank you very much. That brings us to the Board of Education portion and Policy Committee, and we.
We just have the minutes on there from our last meeting, there's no access.
I have a question for Policy Committee. So I think I forwarded to you resolution or changes that the Jefferson Committee will be presenting at their May 7 meeting, hanging, that I don't want to talk about it a few weeks ago. Is that, I think I sent that to you, I think.
Yes.
And has that gone to be viewed by the attorney?
Did you, I, then you sent it to, I think that was behind, wasn't it?
There was, there was a note from James about what the Jefferson Committee, and I think that he said that it would be reviewed before they had to.
He said that last meeting.
Have us.
Yeah, so your, your, the next Policy Committee meeting is May 3.
Only would be May 3.
And the next Jefferson Committee meeting is May 7, so there should be time to.
We'll make sure that, I believe you do copy this all, but I think that, she was, did review it.
Margot reviewed it like prior to our meeting. No, this is, this is.
This is changes that the, someone in, in the Jefferson, on the Jefferson Committee came up with an alternative to the resolutions that we just discussed last month, or the early this month.
Yeah, we'll make sure that you see. Thank you, thank you for reminding, I think you did copy this all, but I'll send that out now, if you hadn't. But Ms. Loud just reminded us of something too, that's May Day, May 3, so we might have to.
Move the meeting, yeah.
But you're saying, I just wanted to say, you're saying your meeting on the 7, so.
So, I mean, you know, you can look at it, and just to get the word that Margot has passed on before the 7. We can do that.
Jim, where did you say the name of Jefferson meetings?
7.
Right. We'll have to put out.
Did you say May 3 is May Day, and it's in the morning, it's from 7 to 11:30?
Well, I think as long as the Jefferson Committee gets the opinion, it doesn't matter what meeting afterwards. We just don't want them to be told again that there's a problem after they vote on it.
Thank you for that. Thank you, thank you. And that brings us to Facilities Committee, and I think that Sam Parch, BBL, and K, well, KSQ wasn't there today, did a wonderful job of letting you know what was happening, both at the high school campus and at our, and I will schedule a tour and let you know what the meeting is. The furniture?
Read it in the picture.
But did you want to describe it?
Sure.
Right, no, I don't want to keep you here much longer, but I had a resolution about the furniture, and we unanimously didn't like the furniture that was offered, and so Margot did a search for something that would be more in keeping with what we were looking at, and so the chairs are smaller, they are black, they are adjustable, and the ones that we'll be sitting in, and the table will be semicircular with a privacy panel, for the ladies, well, for anybody but ladies, short term, but I don't know. And the cost, there was a cost differential, it was a little more expensive, the other furniture, so it was a decision made that by business office, that these chairs are perfectly suitable, and they match the ones that we're going to have, they're black, they match the ones that we're going to have at the dinner table, so I think you'll probably be much happier with that. The tables that Rynette Bailey had, which we sent as a model, that we could not locate anywhere, eventer, but I think you'll be happy with the semicircular table, it's actually a composite of four tables, and I think we'll see one another better, and with the panels behind us, the presentations will be embedded in the video, so.
And if you're interested in testing out the seat, just go to Mr. Verge's office.
Yes, Mr. Verge has, has the chairs that the board will be sitting in, so you can go up and sit in his office and test it out, they won't send us samples. Okay, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Michael, you have a question already?
Yes, the committee met this morning, yeah, this morning, and while you received the treasure, the time report and the front report, which is in the agenda, I would like to move this resolution, can move on both S1?
BOE-68, 69?
Yes, BOE-68 and BOE-69, so I make a motion to.
All right, any discussion?
Thank you.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions.
Okay, so I'm going to add a couple of things.
Are you, old business, Jeep Stadium, what were you doing?
Yes, as far as in this stadium, I have an update yet, as far as I understand, the C, the tournament is still reviewing our proposal, and hopefully we have something by the end of this week, and the contents will be presented to the board on the 8th meeting, where we can agree with that, or we can actually support it then, so. And then I also have a brief discussion about the Ksonia project where.
You think we're going to wait till new business for that, or do you want to?
Yeah, I can give you information. Can we accommodate?
Okay. Thank you. So we'll move on to old business, is there any old business, any trustee want to story out there, old business?
I just want to again mention that I know that a lot of people are upset that we don't have the number of polling places we had in the past, and that they can find the information they need to, where they have to go, and to understand that the board wishes we were able to provide the same arrangements as we had in the past, but it was not in our control, it was the board of elections' decision. And we appreciate the board of elections working with us in a limited way, but we hope that they will expand again the use of the machines that have been purchased by Latin people in the future. So I just want, you know, if anybody watches this thing, to please come out and vote, it's really important for us.
On that topic, there was a, an email from this, this morning, I think.
Yes.
About a, a bill that's been introduced in the assembly to give school districts authorization to either deny or change designation of their school buildings as polling places. Maybe we can have a resolution next meeting in support of that. And that might give us a little bit of leverage against the board of elections. I think they're still using several of our schools as polling places for themselves. And they'll have as many voting machines there as they think they need.
Let's hope you can come to me, community-minded solution.
You always have a little ammunition on your side.
Any other old business? I don't know if this falls under the realm of old business, but a coffee and conversation last month was that it was rescheduled, it was at the Boys and Girls Club. And I think because of the reschedule, the need to reschedule, we didn't, we have too many adult participants. But a lot of the kids came up from downstairs and that was fun. It was, it was a lot of fun.
We had a good conversation, I'm sorry.
We did have a good conversation.
We liked it a lot.
We did.
We liked it a lot from the young kids, so...
Absolutely. But Charles showed the way, he was very good. And our next coffee and conversation, we'll get a lot of emails out everybody. It's going to be at the high school and it will be at 216, beginning of ninth period. It's the same day that student government meets and for some reason the date flew out.
It's May 30, May 30 in the library, 216.
May 30 from library, 216. And we will have representatives from student government there at least and possibly more, I hope. Okay, great. And if there's any other old business now, we'll move on to new business. New business.
Okay, I can speak first. Okay, yesterday at the meeting, it's a several day, we had a big conversation about the Kingstonia project. But what I would like to say first is that we do not know yet how the pilot program will look like for this project. And we also respect another pilot program from the developers of the, near Hotel Bar, the care mount area. So in our books already, we have maybe like 17 or 18 pilot programs, so we'll be adding a couple more. Where it's not so financially beneficial for the district. So as I said, we don't know yet how this two pilot programs are going to look. The developers, they agreed to come to our next, for the finance committee meeting on May 30. And they have promised you have more information for, for us. So until then...
If they have no new information...
I'll make this a second, they said they might have, they, they might let me come, but they said that we'll be coming. So until then, we don't know, so we still...
Yes, this is true. Well, regarding the project, there's been a lot of discussion in the community and we received a lot of letters from people who are interested. And I just wanted to thank you and Dr. Peddino for putting together that email that explained that we have been waiting for information and we have not made up any, you know, recommendations because we don't have the information upon which to make recommendations. And I think the way you explained it in that email was really positive and I think it shed a lot of light on what was real for us. Because everybody's supposing that we have, you know, done all of these things and we really are just waiting for the information so we can make it.
A very similar statement, of course, on the district website.
Oh, that's great.
I mean, and we'll be there and also on Facebook. Because there is a lot of misinformation out there. And I, I know that everybody was salved with lots of letters of support and also letters objecting to the project, that there, there's misconception. We have not done anything at all, we've taken no action whatsoever. We don't even have the information that they promised, so...
Thank you for that response, because I thought it was very well...
I have a question, back in August, the August 30th library, it was, we had, this didn't require any action of our part, on our part. But we had a, in the library was a pilot that had been approved for the Hudson Valley-Kingston Development LLC, which is Charles Blakeman's group, who was building four boutique hotels around uptown. And so I just wondered if Mr. Olson could verify this, if not today, but some other time. So this was a, a traditional pilot program. And the way that it works, a traditional pilot program works, is that the basis assessment value is the value of the property before any improvements are made. And then the, once the, once the improvements are made, that becomes additional assessed value. And so the basis assessed value continues to be taxable, as it always has been, from year one to through year whatever, you know, it's year 10 or year 15. And the additional assessed value, which is the improvements, taxes on them are, or we would get payment in lieu of taxes on that amount, the additional assessed value, on a graduated, graduated scale over the term of the, of the pilot. And for instance, with the Blakeman pilot, started in 2018, the district will get 100 percent of its, I guess they already got it, 100 percent of their normal tax. And then in the next three years, there will be a 0 percent. And I think, I think that's just 0 percent of the additional assessed value, I'm not sure about that. And then there's three years at 25 percent on the additional assessed value. And five years at 50 percent. And then after the 10th year, it's 100 percent of the additional assessed value. So it's, it goes back on the taxable assessment.
So that was only a 10-year pilot? That was only a 10-year pilot?
What's that like?
Well, it looks like it's a formal pilot program, unless...
Yeah, an additional, traditional pilot, not a deviated pilot.
Yeah, I'll verify that.
Thank you. Okay, any other, all right, board member announcements? Okay, which brings us to color participation. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay, all right, then, we don't have any, we'll go into a secondary session. So we would, anything much to attend to?
So move.